And Mike, you're muted again.
Yeah, just keep back our noise out.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna share the flag with everybody. And then John, you are streaming. And we're recording. So you have to start the meeting.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this unique board meeting, probably not the last time we'll do this, but it is indeed different, but we're gonna make the best of it. So I'll call the meeting to order and request a roll call, please.
Mr. Newmoff? You're muted. There you go. Mr. Bush?
Here.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Here.
Vice President Darrow?
Here.
And President McClellan.
Here. At this time, we will take, do the Pledge of Allegiance, so we will stand and say the pledge.
And you'll be looking at our stomachs.
Yes. I pledge allegiance. Now to tonight's agenda. Any additions or corrections to the agenda, Mr. Sawyers?
None, thank you.
With none, could I, I would request a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
No move. Second.
That's a, Mr. Darrow, and then a second by Mr. Newmoff. Roll call, please.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Newmoff?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
President McClellan?
Yes. Communications to the Board, Mr. Sawyers.
Thank you, President McClellan. Board of Education members, I'm just gonna begin this evening with an update regarding our COVID-19 progress within our school district. Our first three weeks occurred prior to spring recess. We came back from spring break, and actually, we're up and running again this past week, and try to help our students be successful as they continue the remote learning across the school district. To be honest, the success of remote learning across our district right now is really a community-based event that entails not just classroom teachers and students, but obviously, our parents and guardians and significant others within our households that are helping our kids be successful every single day with the remote learning requirements. From our youngest learners at the Early Learning Center, who are dependent upon their parents as preschoolers or kindergarteners, to support them in daily obtaining their information from Schoology, our learning platform system, to help our students be successful, to our primary school focused dominantly on literacy and math, but opportunities for continued learning in the other core academic areas, as well as the specials, to our intermediate students who are currently using their Apple One-to-One iPad provided by the school district as part of our district-wide implementation for technology, also continue to use Schoology, probably in a more robust way. So we came back from spring break. We introduced Schoology for the first time to first, second, and third graders, and I will be honest and tell you, it has been a significant lift for our classroom teachers, as well as our parents and students alike at the primary school level for grades one, two, and three. We're doing a tremendous job, but it has been hard. It's a lot of work for parents, who are also, in some cases, working from home based upon the current pandemic status and the requirement for social distancing, and what their companies are doing in relationship to essential workers, to introduce that learning environment where the parent might be trying to work at home, but at the same time, especially with the younger child, also trying to do this thing called "school" every single day as well. So flexibility is key to our entire plan. We've tried to create balanced solutions that are age-appropriate and vary across all grade levels, at our elementary level from grades pre-K through six, that give a balance of academic expectations, access to specified standards that are required for student learning in order to help them continue to be successful, and not create deficiencies between now and the end of the school year. For grades seven through 12, there's actually a more robust platform in place related to Schoology with daily and weekly expectations for students. One of the things that we have discovered is now that our kids are home, and we're not surprised by this, particularly at the secondary level, they don't per se want a traditional school day. They're taking advantage of the fact that the internet, in many cases, and/or Schoology itself, because it's a learning platform system being used across the United States by school districts, does have some capacity demands. So some of our high school students in particular have discovered that I'm gonna sleep a little bit later in the morning and extend my learning opportunity later into the afternoon, when Schoology is not as stressed by the number of kids trying to use it across the United States. We've allowed that to happen, to be extremely flexible in meeting the needs of kids. The one thing that we have requested is that our middle school and high school teachers are still maintaining two hours per day of office hours to have direct access to kids to answer individual questions, be available for video conferencing, to be available for telephone calls, or other ways to support them directly, and we've made sure kids understand the importance of, although you can flex your day a little bit, still having access to your teachers between eight o'clock and 3:30, which is the workday that we published back in the middle of March when this all started. So as we look towards the end of the month, we're anxiously awaiting what the next order will be from the Governor of the State of Ohio and Dr. Acton, the Public Health Director. Based upon the information that I continue to learn on a daily basis, and it is ever-changing, I would still strongly suggest to families that they continue to prepare for the possibility that students will not physically return to school for the duration of the 2019-20 school year. While we know this is extremely disappointing, we do believe that when some relief is provided in the social distancing requirements, as you probably have heard through the daily press conferences, there will still be some recommended restrictions based upon health and safety standards that are afforded for people to try to create a pathway back to normal. We don't anticipate that that "normal" will occur for kids before the end of May. We would love for it to happen. We greatly miss our kids on our school campus. It truly is not the same place without them, and learning is a challenge. But our kids, and our parents, and our staff are doing a tremendous job every single day in trying to meet the academic needs of everyone within a system that has to be differentiated to meet the needs, both age-appropriate and really, from a technological perspective. Not all of our kids are equal in the use of technology. So our teachers', number-one role is to be flexible, to work directly with the student and create student-based solutions that really focus back to our statement of purpose and creating academic opportunities for the students every single day, and hold them accountable for doing them to the best of their ability, but at the same time, recognize the social, emotional, and developmental needs that our kids are having at home. And that environment is different for every single student across our school district based upon what's currently happening within his or her household. So really, from an administrative perspective, we couldn't be prouder of everybody and everything that they've done. This has been an incredible lift within our school district. We're not in this alone, but together, we kind of formed our own little village. You know, there's an African proverb that goes back to "it takes a village to raise a child," and I would say that includes education. And currently, we're in the middle of that proverb, living it every single day, to actually make this village called New Albany come together to meet the needs of over 5,000 kids on a daily basis, both academically and developmentally. We do have access to social, emotional supports for kids. I would remind families of that. Our school counselors, our mental health specialists, and our prevention clinicians remain available to families for video conferencing or teleconferencing to meet the individual needs of those students, and anything that we can do to assist them in being successful academically. We check daily to see the percentage of students that are logging into Schoology for attendance and accountability purposes. We have yet to be under 90% since we started this electronic process. We're averaging 93% to 96% daily attendance across the school district, which is tremendous, because especially at the Early Learning Center, parents are the ones that are required to log into Schoology to actually get the homework, or the work, schoolwork specifically for their students. But in grades one through 12, students are logging in themselves in order to be able to communicate and send that information back to teachers through Schoology. So it has been a lift, but we're doing everything we can to make sure everyone is supported socially, emotionally, as well as academically, as we basically continue this process. I also wanna mention that there's still support. Yes?
What's our typical attendance percentage on a given day?
90%.
So we have higher attendance?
And particularly at the high school level, I would tell you, yes. Attendance is higher currently at the high school. But again, there's still opportunity. Some kids have actually thrived in this environment, and they like it. It's different because it's not traditional. Not every kid does school the same way, so this is gonna let kids, and I would say it's a preview particularly for our high school seniors, that are debating whether or not they like an online environment or a hybrid course for a blended learning environment, where you go to school X number of days for a class, and you do the other classes online like we currently do at the high schools. So we do have a few of these courses for blended learning opportunities currently available at New Albany High School, but I think it's exposed kids who have never had that opportunity very quickly to discover, I like it or I don't like it. The biggest piece of feedback we've gotten from parents and kids is they miss seeing each other, talking to each other, and having the social experience every single day. There's just no way to replicate that, given the current social distancing requirements other than through technology. So the parents that are comfortable with that are letting that happen, particularly at the secondary level, but many of our elementary friends are really with their siblings in their homes, and don't have direct access to the other friends that they would see every single day at school. So that piece has been very hard, which is where the social, emotional supports have been very important for us to provide. I would also mention that we still have opportunities within our school district. We're feeding over 200 kids on a weekly basis across the school district in cooperation with the New Albany Food Pantry. We have about 85 families that are participating on a weekly basis based upon change in circumstance related to COVID-19. So if there are any family members in our community that need any support related to food, please know that there are solutions that are available. Contact anyone in the school district, and we will get you a direct connect to access that food, or you can call me directly, or email me directly, and I will make sure that that happens for you. Mr. Hood and the New Albany Food Pantry have done a tremendous job in meeting the needs weekly of our kids and our families, and we're very proud that the community has embraced them and strongly supported them with all of the Amazon orders, or gifts of food, or gifts of monetary donations that went specifically to the food pantry. We're actually in very, very good shape to continue this process should it become necessary. We're hopeful that we will soon be out of this quarantine situation and have new opportunities with different rules related to social distancing. Again, if family circumstances change for any reason, we do have food available for kids and families through cooperation of the New Albany Food Pantry. So in the end, our teachers, our non-teachers, our tech teams, everyone across the school district, so I don't care if you're an administrator, a teacher, a non-teacher for a classified employee, you've done a tremendous job in helping our students try to be successful within this e-learning environment for remote learning opportunities that's required based upon COVID-19 and the current pandemic. We really do greatly value and appreciate the parents and the responsibility that you've taken on at home. I've received many emails from parents that have a whole new appreciation for going to school for six and a half hours a day. Again, because you kind of forget part of that from your childhood, and now they've assumed that leadership role to make sure that their kids have access to the academic learning and the social, emotional supports that are required to help them be successful. Again, I would remind our parents, if you have any questions whatsoever related to the academics or the social, emotional supports, contact any classroom teacher, any building or district administrator, any school counselor, mental health specialist, or prevention clinician, any employee in the school district, and we will find a way to support you beyond what we've already done, if necessary. But again, we're very grateful for the partnerships that we have across our learning organization. I'm hopeful that this will ease in the short term, but I have to be honest and tell parents, based upon what I currently know, you really need to be prepared for the fact that e-learning may continue through the remainder of the 2019-20 school year. Should that be necessary? I wanna talk about seniors for just a minute, because we've got a lot of questions related to seniors. So last week, we conducted a survey specifically with our senior students through Mr. Kramer at the high school with his administrative team and the senior team teachers. We received 271 survey responses of the 382 seniors at New Albany High School. We asked them for specific ideas and feedback related to the traditional senior activities that take place dominantly, beginning at the end of this month and throughout the month of May. We've asked them for ideas on how to conduct some of those ceremonies virtually, if necessary. We've solicited ideas specifically related to the senior-based activities called prom, and what that would mean in the future. We've asked questions regarding commencement and their preferences related to commencement. We have had conversations with several venues about the possibility of moving graduation into the summer. We haven't publicly announced those venues or those specific dates because we were waiting for additional information from Governor DeWine. The Convention Center, which is traditionally where we've hosted commencement for the last several years, has offered us additional dates in June, and July, and August, but they are pending the outcome of COVID-19, and whether or not the Convention Center would be required to be used for hospitalization space, and for how long. So we have contacted other central Ohio venues to specifically have conversations about proposed dates. We've had conversations about having an outdoor commencement ceremony in Eagle Stadium, should the social distancing requirements mandate that certain groups are allowed to be together, but only in an outdoor arena. So we are looking at any and all options possible, and expect to communicate to families before the end of the month what tentative dates would be for June, July, or August related specifically to graduation. In addition to that, we know there's lots of concerts that have been scheduled. Those likely will get postponed if the school year obviously doesn't reconvene. We did move the Middle School Musical to, we have a date in June, and we also have a date in August at the McCoy for Frozen Junior, since it was ready for production. That has been postponed and has been rescheduled at the McCoy, so we've communicated that specifically with the middle school families. The high school theater production this spring of Radium Girls has been canceled. It is impossible to put it into production based upon our current timeline for what's happening with COVID-19, and that's been shared with our families. Spring sports will be subject to the Governor's order and what Dr. Acton specifically does. If school remains closed, the Ohio High School Athletic Association has notified us that all spring sports will be canceled. If school resumes on Monday, May 4th for some reason, then the spring sports season would commence and likely continue until the Fourth of July weekend. So it will be abbreviated, but would go through the summer. So that has been released by OHSAA, and we're actively watching it, because we know it's clearly very important to the spring athletes. I've asked Mr. Wieldenhouse, our athletic director, to begin planning that's necessary to host a senior events for spring sports virtually, if necessary. That would include Senior Night to honor our seniors, specifically through some form of a video or electronic-based solution, as well as opportunities to look at what else we can do to celebrate spring sports in the event that they cannot be hosted. Mr. Kramer's also working on, in relationship to graduation, the Senior Select Ceremony that typically takes place, where seniors select the staff member to present them with their diploma. We've come up with a virtual solution for that. We're talking about virtual solutions for National Honor Society induction, the thespian induction, and the celebration of excellence for the academic honors that would be paid to students, that in the event we cannot have large groups congregate, we would come up with a virtual solution for those specifically. So the pivot point for us is dominantly, what happens next with Governor DeWine and Dr. Acton? So as soon as we know the status, and I think it'll just be one more chunk of time, currently, we're through Friday, May 1st, that school is closed. The next decision point is, will school reopen at all? It'll either be yes, it is, or no, it's not. And as soon as we know that outcome, we will then announce all of the next steps related to what's gonna happen for end-of-the-year activities, including the e-learning that would be required through the last calendar day. We did publicly announce to all high school students and families that there will be no final exams at New Albany High School at the end of the school year, regardless of return to school or continuation of remote learning. So there will be no finals that will be administered this school year. So we have gone public with that. I will tell you that the kids were absolutely thrilled that we got rid of final exams, as you might expect, given everything that's currently going on in their world. So we are trying to be flexible, 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 but at the same time, maintain high expectations for the essential learning that should still be taking place between now and the end of the school year. So we know this is a lift for everyone in our community. It's a lift for our teachers. We had to respond very, very quickly. Our faculty and our staff, I believe, did a tremendous job. The daily support that's going on is absolutely incredible, and huge props to our families, because we have parents that never thought they were gonna be in this situation, that are now in this situation, just like all of us, trying to discover what I need to do every day to help my kid be successful at school, even though school is now at home. So we thank them for their partnership, and again, if anyone needs any support or has questions, please contact anyone in the school district directly, and we will be happy to help you. I'm happy to answer any questions board members have about other specific areas that I didn't specifically talk about, if you have any questions about that.
Michael, just briefly, you talked about some of the the community-wide effort that's gone into supporting our families and our students. You talked a lot about the food pantry. Can you just briefly touch on the whole technology piece? Because I know that was a difficult thing to make sure that all of our students had access to technology, and what that means for the, whether it's the next three weeks or whether it's through the end of the year?
So we're fortunate as a school community that over 90% of our kids have access to some form of technology at home. But we did do a survey with families and kids in March to find out what type of technology do you have access to, and do you have access to the internet to support this e-learning environment that would be required specifically? So the survey data came back and really showed that the gaps on devices was really at the primary school level, so we implemented plans specifically to ensure that any student that actually needed a device was given a device from the school district. The most devices were passed out in grades 11 and 12 for Chromebooks and/or at the elementary level for primary school students. In addition to that, there were about 45 families that responded specifically to the last tech survey. We did a second one just before the end of spring break to verify if circumstances have changed in the household, if you still hadn't, you needed a device, if your device had been broken, if you lost access to the internet because of life circumstance changing for one of your parents. We did get new information just before spring break would occur or end, so we did actually schedule through our technology team individual appointments for a parent and a student to come to the school district, deemed essential to pick up a specific device. They did not have public interaction beyond the staff member with whom they met to get the device from. We've also created a partnership with Verizon to give hotspots for internet access to specific at needs kids in the school district. And fortunately, I was able to secure a grant from the New Albany Community Foundation, back to your point about partnerships, Mr. McClellan, that the New Albany Community Foundation has been an incredible partner, and actually helped us secure those hotspots through Verizon to give to kids at home during this crisis, to get through the end of the school year, if necessary. So the foundation's been wonderful. Food pantry's been wonderful. I will tell you, we have a partnership like it's never before with the fire department. Our bus garage has been converted into a second fire substation, so it's Plain Township Substation Number Two. It's located at the bus garage. They actually divided the firefighter force into two different locations to protect them from COVID-19 within the same unit. So we're actually operating a second fire station out of our bus garage until the status of what happens with school is truly known. So it has been a community event. I'm fortunate, I have requested several local physicians and persons participating in the medical world to actually participate on a New Albany COVID-19 task force. I have 30 dedicated professionals that meet with me weekly to talk about the status of COVID-19, how it's directly impacting our community, and what else we can do to support our families. The video series is an example of that, where we specifically send out information from their perspective to try to help keep our families safe, and our students safe, and our community safe for what's happening specifically with this pandemic. So it really has been a team approach. I go back to, it's like, it really is a village. It's a collective effort, and it's not just about school. It's also about life and at home, things that we can do to support each other, to help everyone be successful, to be kind, and care for one another during this crisis.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. We have an opportunity for public participation. Ms. Jenkins, did we get any advance requests?
We did not.
Okay. So then, that takes us to superintendent's items. So could I have a motion, please, on superintendent's items A through C?
No move.
Second.
Thank you. A second by Ms. Kalanowski? Mr. Sawyers?
Thank you, President McClellan. Letter A is on March 27, 2020. Governor DeWine passed and signed into law House Bill 197 as an emergency order. So it includes a litany of opportunity that we need to put in place to basically balance board policy and the specifics requirements we have for students and staff pursuant to Board of Education policy, and now how it's been modified through flexibility of House Bill 197. So I'm not gonna go through the entire resolution. It's available online, and board members, you have access to it, and I had sent it to you prior to the meeting. But it accounts for the school closure order to be extended through May 1st, 2020, with the mandate that e-learning is required to continue for students in lieu of their daily attendance at school. The remote learning opportunities that I talked about in the plans that we put in place specifically for the school district, their curriculum requirements to go to the minimum essential standards that are required in specific curriculum between now and the end of the school year, should remote learning continue, and what that specifically means for students and the flexibility that would be required to help them be successful and accountable academically. Section 5 is for supplemental pay for spring athletics or co-curricular activities, and this is authorization that if necessary, Ms. Jenkins and myself and the administrators are conducting an evaluation of the supplemental contracts to determine if any are necessary to be prorated based upon the school closure and the inability to fulfill specific aspects of that supplemental contract. And once we conduct that evaluation, we would take necessary action to effectuate the outcome. Reimbursements. Once we know what the decision is for Governor DeWine related to what school's gonna continue remotely or in person, beginning Monday, May 4th, we would execute reimbursements for specific things across our school district, including tuition-based programs such as all-day kindergarten, the Eagles Nest before and after-school programs, the things that we've collected tuition for that clearly we're not providing services to because of the pandemic and the fact that kids are no longer on the school campus. So we've listed all the potential areas that could result in reimbursements, including for its food service accounts, fee structures, or tuition-based programs, and will help families understand what those refunds would be from the school district once we know the decision from Governor DeWine. Board meetings, it's just to confirm the fact that House Bill 197 provided the flexibility for boards of education to meet through video or teleconference, and to have the ability to conduct business in this means as form of a public meeting. And additionally, beginning April 27, 2020, based upon the difficulties associated to public participation in a remote setting, we suspend that policy until we are actually able to reconvene and congregate as a group, and then the board would rescind the postponement or the suspension of public participation in your meetings at that time. So the purpose of the resolution is to comply with House Bill 197 and all the requirements to basically adhere to, to, in accordance with Board of Education policy that we would be in violation of because of House Bill 197. So House Bill 197 is the recommendation, and that's the purpose of the resolution. Letter B this evening, our standard employee contractual items related to the business and operations of the school district on a daily basis for the rest of the school year specifically. And then the next section specifically deals with our Board of Education resolution to tell the State of Ohio, and although this deadline has now been extended, we're doing it tonight, that if the state assessments continue, which we anticipate they will next school year for 2020-21, when we're back hopefully physically together, and we have a normal school year, that we would choose for the third-grade assessment specifically to be conducted through paper for language arts and/or mathematics. And then, we do rescind tonight on the agenda, we've worked with EF2000. And then, we do rescind tonight on the agenda, we've worked with EF Tours and our families for all the international trips and/or other third-party providers. Clearly, our students are not traveling this summer, so we had previously board adopted all of the summer trips and extension of learning opportunities for our kids, and we rescind that action this evening and are working with the companies to reschedule as necessary or possible in the future. Lastly, we do have an approval this evening for an early graduation for students from New Albany High School that we're happy to recommend as well. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
If there are no questions, then I will, I want to request a roll call, please.
Mr. Neumoff?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
President McClellan?
Yes. That brings us to our next item, which is executive session. So, I would request a motion to enter into an executive session as permitted by Section 121.22 G1 and 4 of the Ohio Revised Code to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees or officials, and to prepare for, conduct, or review a collective bargaining strategy.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Darrow, second by Ms. Kalanowski. Roll call, please.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Neumoff?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
President McClellan?
Yes. We are adjourned to executive session. We will not have any other action taken when we come out of executive session. So, thank you all for watching.